So do I need to change anything? I'm usually connected to one TV at a time.
Yeah, it's amazing what a bureaucracy that can be.
Right.
Is that one plugged in?
Jeff, who lost the way.
How's Verona?
Good.
Jeff has lost weight. It's transformative.
No, it was possible. Just. I should say, he's heated up dinner.
Otherwise, we can do a screen share.
There's new people.
Small things make me there.
Like cheese.
Cheese.
But I have to make it like. Otherwise, I can connect to a wireless just like.
Yeah, do you want to try to connect to one?
I do too. Yeah, see which TV it wants to be on. I think you have to go to the screen share.
I know, I just wanted to see if it's.
Oh my gosh. A lot of old bureaucracy that Rachel has to deal with is just stunning.
Yes, let me. Okay, well, that's just one.
I think.
The other one.
Okay. Okay, I think we're gonna get started. We got one working, right? All of them working now? All right, let me call the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, May 2nd, 2022 to order. Candy?
Beshin?
Here.
Belo?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Dan Campan?
Yeah.
And one?
Here.
Okay. Number two is approval of village board minutes. We have two, April 18th and 19th. If anybody doesn't object, we can do both at the same time unless there's, we need to talk about something. Otherwise, we'll, you do.
Phil and I can't vote on item 3B.
We were here.
Okay. All right, you just say abstain, I guess. Or, then, let's do it separate. We'll do it separate then. Okay, so let's take April 18th. The regular meeting first, and get a motion a second.
Motion.
Okay. Carlene and Derek. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. And then April 19th, the reorganization meeting. I'll take a motion as second. Okay, all right. Jenna and then Mike? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, public appearances, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak for three minutes? I'm not seeing any. All right. We'll go to 4B, which is presentation of conceptual plans for the new Oregon Public Library Facility at North Alpine Parkway and authorizing the library board to submit zoning applications. All right.
And just because we have some new board members tonight, I'm gonna just introduce, we have Jeff Vine from Vine Consulting. He's the owners representative for the project. And we have Brett Rodinghouse, who's an architect from OPN Architects. They're gonna take a few minutes to walk you through highlights of the concept plans, which by definition are just kind of a draft, they're preliminary, they're probably gonna change a little bit as the design process evolves. But I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff to lead our discussion. There'll also be plenty of chance for you to ask questions when Jeff's done speaking.
All right, well, it's been a while. I think the last time I was here is when we approved the Alpine Parkway site. And so there's a lot of work that's been going on between now and then, or then and now. And so I thought I'd just give you an idea where we are in the process. So we have a CSM that we got approved that basically set the new parcel that the library will own for the long term. And once we got that piece of property set, then we've been spending time with our civil engineers and OPN to set up our site plan and get our building sited. We also have a comprehensive plan change that's in the works, parallel to what is gonna be our next step, which is gonna be submitting to the plan commission. But we are, we're only submitting to them on a preliminary basis this Thursday. So that is to get their input and just give them some initial information and have them be part of that process. And so we're doing the same thing tonight with you guys, is just showing you our initial concepts for the site. The MOU wants us to come and get approval from you before we can go to them for the preliminary. And then eventually, we're gonna submit to them officially in June for our actual plan commission submittal. So we're getting ready to get ready to get ready to submit to plan commission. And again, that's the site plan approval, so there's lots of engineering, utilities, other things that need to happen for the site plan. Eventually, we'll get to the building, which we don't have a lot of information for the building tonight. But we have been, we did go through the process of a couple different concepts for the massing of the building. And we've been doing a lot of work on floor plans for the building. And so we kind of picked the size and shape and know enough about the floor plans that we, we think that this is the right footprint that we're gonna show you on the site plan. And so with that, I'm gonna have Brett just quickly kind of describe how we landed with, with what we have, where we're at. And then we'll take questions. And if there's any other topics that have to do with the new library, we can quickly give you information on that as well, so. I am Brett Rodinghouse with OPN Architects. So as Jeff mentioned, we've really been focusing a good portion of our time on the site and making sure that the building is located appropriately, not only where it sits on the site, but then also elevation wise, because there is quite a bit of grade change on that site. And one of the things that was an early challenge was to make sure that it wasn't a building that dominates the site, that sits way up like these lanterns that are, I guess, overbearing on the site. So we want to respect the site as much as possible. So one of the ways that we do that, there's, there's a couple challenges with that. In a perfect world, where you would enter the site, that elevation would be almost right where your building entry would be. But because of the way that the building tiers down, we would almost have to raise the site by five feet or so. So what we started looking at were ways that we could bring the building down. And one of the ways of doing that is you come off of Alpine Parkway, and then we actually use the parking lot and start sloping it down around the, the grade to get us down. So think of a ramp on both sides to get you down to the front side of the building. So that way, we can bring the building down roughly five feet lower than what it would have been. This allows us to sit lower and into the hill just a little bit. So that's, that took quite a bit of exercise to understand how we were going to do that. Another benefit of doing that is if you leave that building up, there's quite a lot of fill that has to happen. And that means you're bringing in a ton of soil to not only raise the building, but the parking lot. And then you have to get that back down to where the grade is once you leave your site. So another benefit by bringing that down is you aren't bringing in all this fill. We still have to bring in some, but not near as much as what we were originally worried about happening to do when we did that. So that was really the longest exploration of how that was gonna sit elevation wise. One, from a cost benefit, we didn't have to bring in all that fill. Two, building it into the hill a little bit allowed us to reduce the height on the site. And then a few other things, so we talked about how we're going to bring or slope that parking lot around the building. We'll have retaining walls and some different ways to traverse the site to make sure that you can get from Alpine Parkway, the bike paths that are there to get to the main building. One of the main features there is in the center where you see that, that circle in the middle of the plan, that is going to be a feature element. We've talked about whether it's sculpture or something like that. But really, how we're using that is our ramps to get down, so that way you can get to the front. So that way, we're maintaining ADA accessibility from Alpine Parkway all the way to the front door. Then, as you go into the building, sorry, let me back up a little bit further. That is sort of how you traverse the parking lot. The lighter gray line that goes all the way around the building, that's a continuation of the bike path. So one of the early requests that we had was giving the opportunity for someone that is on the bike path right along Alpine Parkway to be able to continue on that path without crossing traffic. So the continuous loop, we've called it, around the, the library is that gray line. Then there's different connection points from that path back to the front door, as well to the backside of the building. It's kind of hard to say the backside of the building, because there really isn't a back to this building. It's viewed pretty much at 360 degrees. So that kind of highlights the circulation paths around the building. Right when you come in off of Alpine Parkway, if we come back to the main entrance, the book drop is to the left, whereas most of the, the parking and drop off and all of that is to the right. So right when you come into the site, you're kind of left with the decision to either go to the left for book drop as well as your book collection. So they will have a service window there as well. And that is to the left, and then the loop towards the left side of the plan there.
Excuse me, just a second. I'm the last person who can see that screen up here. So if you can just, for these folks, refer to the page in the packet that you, so he's on page 19 right now, just so everybody knows.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So then more towards the middle of the floor, of the site plan, that's where that main entrance is, right there. And that, the idea there is, design wise, that's where the lobby will be, and that will connect all the way from the front to the back of the building, really trying to take and use the building to accentuate the, the landscape as much as possible. So right when you come into the site, you'll understand and see a lot of different ways to experience the nature around it. We're still, as Jeff mentioned, massaging some of the floor plan, which will have minor effects to the building, massing. But generally, what you're seeing on the plan here is the shape of the building there. You'll also see there's the rectangles to the far left, the kind of brown or orange rectangles. That's where we're currently planning for a geothermal field. And then all the utilities are on that side of the building as well. So now, right now, as Jennifer mentioned, this is, these are draft renderings of the exterior. So standing at the, the entrance to the site, looking at the building, we really have a two-story and a one-story configuration of the building. The single story is the staff areas as well as the children's area. And then on the two-story is where you have that main lobby circulation, as well as the community room and all of the other collection spaces. So coming around, as you're traversing through the site, in this instance, you've come the south direction around that loop, looking back at the building with these dormers that peek up off of the roof, and then continue down to the one-story spaces to the far left there. As far as materiality goes, we're looking at a lighter brick for a couple reasons. Darker brick seems like it might dominate the site, make the building feel much more massive and heavy. So we're looking at a lighter colored brick to help it feel a little bit lighter, along with all the glass and everything that we're looking at on the site as well. Okay, we can go to the next slide here. So then as we go around to the backside of the building, the east side of the building, on the nature preserve, those dormers or punchouts that we are looking at on the front side also repeat on the backside, helping direct views to the nature beyond. And then there will be some landscaping in the middle there, where you're seeing that white sort of patio in the middle there. And then to the left is where the children's program area is, children's collection, with then a little outdoor patio space for them as well. Coming around on the continuation of the bike path to the east side, so again, on the south side of the building. the south side of the building, coming around the path, this is what you would expect to see. A large spans of glass on the south side of the building, and then those punchouts that we were talking about on the backside of the building.
All right. Thanks. So, I'm just going to touch on just two more things, and then we'll, we'll let you guys ask some questions. So, we've got these, the building renderings, which are just kind of studies at this point. So, I wouldn't get too caught up on what you're seeing there. But if we can go back and look at the site plan, that we're actually, you know, working on that approval first, we'll be, we'll be going to plan commission. We've been through with village staff already. And, we've been working on this with our building committee. And then, other departments, like we've already had review with the fire department. And, we've looked at the design of the utilities with Jeff from Public Works. So, there's been a lot of energy spent. So, by the time it gets to plan commission, those people will already be on board with, with what we have designed. And, they can help with recommending approval to that, to plan commission. So, that was one thing to note. And then, the other thing is that, you know, one of the cool things that's going on here, because we're, we're in this nature environment, and there was some of the requirements and recommendations from the village board for some of the environmental concerns, we've able to, been able to kind of wrap all those things in here. So, if you look at the parking lot, and even that area where there's that turnaround circle to the bike drop, or the book drop, all of those areas where we're creating spaces between the pavement and curves and other hard surfaces, we're trying to get, depending on which areas infiltrate, we're trying to have those areas be bio retention swales, so we can manage stormwater to go to those areas. And then, we have other areas outside the parking lot that would be restored in a different manner, depending on how much water would go in those areas. And then, you'll see a big shape over there to the right-hand side of the page, which is a dry stormwater management basin that would hold water only during the peak flow. So, if everything outside of the hard surfaces for the building gets restored back to prairie, it would be multiple levels of different kinds of plantings, depending on which areas get more water, which areas have water that stands, which areas get water that's only there temporarily. And other places that would see, you know, only rainwater. So, we're going to have the whole spectrum of that type of native planning. And then, Brett mentioned the geothermal wells. We also have an area on the single-story roof that we're planning for solar PV panels, which the electric power that they provide helps with the electricity that the geothermal system needs, which is our, probably our biggest power consumption item. And then, on that same flat roof area, we're planning out an area where we could potentially have some green roof. And so, we're trying to incorporate, you know, all of those items into this plan. So, I guess with that, we'll take questions.
All right. Mike, and then Carlene?
Yeah. Is, is solar panels not going on the dormers then? Have you moved away from that concept?
Well, we're changing the design a little bit with those as well. So, we're going to kind of wait and see what shapes those end up being. If you saw some renderings before, where those kind of stuck up as a triangular wing, if you put solar panels there, which are obviously rectangular, you know, it, it gets to be kind of a funky shape on the triangular wing. But if we end up with some more flat area instead of those triangles, we could do that. I think the limiting factor for the amount of solar panel that we have isn't going to be flat roof space. It's probably going to be initial cost budget, because, you know, we've, we've got a fairly large area on that flat roof for panels. So, I think we'll be maxed out before we run out of roof space.
Okay. That makes sense. Brett, I told this to you privately after your presentation at the library board meeting, but I'll say it publicly, I think you did a really stellar job with this design and all the constraints we put on it. It's really interesting to see what you've come up with now that you're not constrained space-wise as much as you were on 249 North Main Street. One last comment I have for you, and it's minor, and I don't know what I'm talking about, so you can just ignore it, is the bike path that goes around the library, it looks like it meets at almost a 90-degree angle to the sidewalk. And perhaps if it got angled a little bit more, the only people that are going to be going on that path are probably people, you know, coming from the north, going onto the north end of the path, or from the south, going onto the south path. It might make it an easier transition for them.
Yeah. There is a radius there, but we can certainly make it a little bit more.
Like I said, I don't know what I'm talking about. So, take it for what it's worth.
All right. Carlene?
Yeah. So, I don't know what I'm talking about either. So, this is just a question. The building, when we look at slide 19, is actually, that slide, is actually north-south, correct, with the, the windows on the east and west sides?
Yeah. So, this is rotated?
Yeah. Okay. Right. I'm just making sure that I, I'm, I'm understanding that correctly. So, then, if we go to the next slide, I'm wondering if, I, I too really like the design. I'm just wondering if the peak up on the south side would be more conducive to passive solar than the up on the north side. And, so, it's a, it's a question because I don't know the answer.
Your north light tends to be a little softer and a little more diffused, whereas your south light can be very harsh and drive up the solar heat gain that you would get. So, there's, there's a lot of explorations left to do on this building as far as shading, especially on this side of the plan. What we're looking at is the west side. And, everybody knows that west side can get very intense. So, there's still a lot of exploration on how we handle that. One of the reasons that we kicked them up, well, there were a couple of reasons we kicked them up that way, was, one, if we were going to stand the chance of putting solar panels on those dormers, that they are already set up and facing south, and then stand the chance of potentially getting some northern light on the, on the top or the high side of that. Once we get into the detail of it, we've still got to flush all of that out.
Okay.
And if your question was about where the solar panels are going to go?
I think.
Right.
Was your question about where they're going to go?
Mine was more about passive solar versus.
Okay. Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Phil?
Apparently, I need to qualify this by saying I don't know what I'm talking about. But, the bio retention basins, those are dry, like gravel or?
No, they're wet and they're planted. And, well, they will be wet when they receive water.
Yeah. They will be, they will be dry. But, in a rain event, that is where the water will collect. And so, that, and just, and Jeff already kind of touched on it, but that's one of the reasons why the parking lot expanded just a little bit, was because we were trying to create space to handle stormwater runoff. So, it's not just a massive pond on one end of the building. We're trying to find creative ways to handle it on the site, as well as make the parking lot not visually so obtrusive.
And there's still a lot of design going on for stormwater. We, we just had the soil tested, specifically pits dug in certain areas to figure out which areas can be a bio retention swale. And then, there's other types of areas. So, if you can imagine a rain event, some of them might only hold water for 10 minutes. Some areas might hold water for 24 hours. But, after 24 hours, there's no standing water on the site.
So, is it safe to say bio retention basin is the equivalent of rain garden? Would that be a layman's turn?
That's correct. Yep. There's, there's planting in there. As much as possible, you want the plants to use that water, if they can. So, they're sitting there waiting for the rain. And then, what water doesn't get used by the plants is going to infiltrate into the ground through those basins.
All right. So, so, I too don't know what I'm talking about. But, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the question. So, Brett, the, the, back to the windows, any, one of the issues we had with the, the youth center, we had all those windows, was the, the amount of heat. Any, any, look at any tinting or anything? Are you concerned about that?
So, usually, it's not exactly the tinting.
Yeah.
The tinting will actually cause the UV to dump its energy inside the glass, which can be bad.
Yeah.
What we want to try to do is reflect it back out, or stop it with some sort of screening.
All right.
So, we're screening, depending on how you do it, can be very costly. So, we're trying to balance how we handle all of that.
Okay. Okay.
We're also looking at, is it too much glass on that side? So, we're still evaluating by difference on this side, down to the type of glass that we use.
Okay. All right. Phil? Oh, I'm sorry. Derek, I didn't see you.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
I, I recall the original drawing, I believe, for the Main Street site was all two-stories. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And, and I have to say that the one-story part looks a little bit like an addition to me right now. I don't see anything architecturally that ties it into the other part of the building. And I understand, it sounds like there are solar panels. That might be driving some of that. But, I wonder why, how, how it was decided to make part of the one-story?
Well, let, first, let's talk about the massing. And then, and then we'll, there's other reasons when we get to the interiors, which we, we won't get into tonight because we don't have those drawings with us, and they're not ready yet. But, so, for the massing, we looked at a complete single-story building. We looked at a two-story building like we had at Main Street. And then, we ended up with what we're calling this hybrid, where we have more first floor than we have second floor. And, part of the reasons where we landed with those is that if we went with a single story, the building ends up getting to be pretty sprawling, right? It's, it's long. Like, you know, you got to make sure you got a bottle of water to get to the other end of the building if you're taking the kids with you, because it's way down there. And, the other problem is, is that we're, you know, where we landed with the footprint of the building and the parking lot is, for the most part, determined by where we have high ground, where we have infiltration, and where we have wetlands. So, when you move all those things around, it kind of lands in an obvious spot. If it's a single-story building, it started to get too far out, where we started to impact because of grades and other things. You can't have this long building hanging out over the hill without causing a bunch of problems. So, we eliminated the single-story idea. The two-story idea, although it's, I guess, efficient from a construction standpoint, there's uses, there's more uses that want to live on first floor of the library than want to live on second floor. So, when we show you the floor plans, you'll see that the adult collection and, and some of the staff are up on the second story, kind of a way, you know, further disconnected, purposefully, you know, up there. But, there's, there's more things that want to be down on first floor connected to this, to this lobby. And so, just that ratio alone started making us realize part of the building, that we needed more one-story than we needed two. And then, what you don't see when you're looking at that single story, is that allows the ceilings in the children's area back towards that nature area to be taller. Because the, when we're underneath the second story, you know, the ceilings can only be so high.
Sure.
So, it gives us, you know, a normal first floor under the second story, a, a tall second story, you know, on the top of the two-story building. But then, it gives us kind of this medium height, different use space for the single story. So, I know that's a long answer, but we spent a lot of time landing on, you know, this right combination.
It all makes sense. I, I guess I would just say that if there was some way to, to make it look more as one building, to me, it still looks like a separate.
Yep. And they're, and they're working on that. We, we've talked about that. The intersection, the connection, how do we get those two things to work together?
Thank you very much.
All right. Let's let Derek in here.
No, I actually, you hit on a lot of the points with your answer to Phil's question. So, thank you. The service guy in me is wondering, and I know you said you haven't really done the interiors yet, but where is the mechanical room located within this building?
Yeah. So, we can actually talk a little bit about that. They are in the single-story portion of the building. So, on, if you can go back to the site plan. So, see where the book drop loop is?
Yep.
All of those utility sort of functions are to that half of the building. And then, the planning there is how do you get your mechanicals back with the two-story, right?
Yeah.
Because you've got this large H, yeah, lobby space that's in the middle. So, we're, we're still toying with all of that. But, conceptually, that's where we planned all of that.
And the HVAC system's going to be, with the geothermal, it's going to be heat pumps. So, it's basically smaller furnaces, you know, more than you would think. So, it's a larger quantity of smaller units spread throughout the building. It's not like we're trying to use one big rooftop unit and get, you know, ducting 100 feet or something like that. So, it actually works well to spread those around, I think.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. It looks like we are looking for, Martin, correct me, we're looking for a motion authorizing the library board to submit zoning applications. Correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd love to approve as presented.
Okay. Second, we'll take, saw Carlene's hand go up. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, guys. All right. We'll go to 4C. And we have Margaret and Deb here to talk about this, the status of the Oregon Splash Pad.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Straub with the Oregon Brooklyn Optimist Club. And I do know what I'm talking about. Since we're talking about water and solar, we're in the right place tonight. Anyhow, so, I would like to just briefly mention that the Oregon Brooklyn Optimist Club, or the Optimist Club in general, what our mission is, is to help bring up the youth in our communities through joy and hope and optimism. And part of that is also their health and their well-being. So, many years ago, we were looking for a project which we thought that would, we could make an impact on Oregon. And we found out that the Fitchburg had this wonderful splash pad. And in talking to people from the Oregon community, we found out that they were going from Oregon over to Fitchburg. And we were like, well, why can't we have our own splash pad? So, at that time, our group of us from the Optimist Club met with Deb, who is then the director of the Oregon Pool, to start talking about potentially building a splash pad in Oregon. We met with so many people within the Oregon community. We put out a, a call in a sense, asking if people were interested in it, would you come and talk to us? On our very first meeting, we had about 40 to 45 people from the community there. We had businesses, we had banks, we had parents, we had grandparents, we had youth organizations, we had daycare representatives. So, we had a nice swath from the community to come and give us some guidance and some support for the project. So, when we started doing our investigation at that time in 2015, we found out that there was only about four splash pads in Dane County. At this time, almost every community has a splash pad but Oregon. So, we started talking to various companies, construction companies, contractors, people could, who could help us build this splash pad. And, so, it took us a while. It took us a couple of years to get that information together. In the interim, we were having spaghetti dinners, we were trying to sell pavers, which would go around the splash pad area. We had brought sales, and we just did other activities as outreach to the community to try to garner support for this project. And it's great to say, during that period of time, we were able to raise quite a bit of money. We raised probably about $200,000 at that time. And then, of course, we had the wavering economy, and then COVID hit. So, us, like everybody else, including the library and other people, have run into this problem with fundraising. And so, our fundraising efforts were a little bit stymied. But, since that time, we have even worked harder to try to garner additional funds. So, we've reached out to more businesses and asking for in-kind donations. We've been doing a lot of one-on-one to the, the public, asking them for help. We've had young people, as, as young as like six years old donate their piggy bank. We had one girl donate $6.88. Somebody else donated their birthday money. So, these are people, these are young people who really want the splash pad in Oregon. But, on the other hand, we also have businesses like Gunderson Funeral Home and Cockeys, who have donated a nice portion to the splash pad as well. We've also applied for many grants. We received a grant from the Madison Community Foundation for $25,000. We got another anonymous estate donation for $30,000. And then, each of these, each of the present committee members, there's eight of us on at that original 40 or 45, who were on that committee. There's eight of us that have hung in there and done this. We have each ourselves donated anywhere between $10,000 to $15,000 apiece, because we believe in this project. We believe this project is important for Oregon. So, that's where we kind of have been and where we're at. We have also applied, as of today, at 4:10 PM, we submitted a grant to the- we submitted a grant to the Land and Water Conservation, or Conservation Fund, uh, requesting a matching grant of up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That grant, we will not know about until later this fall. And if we are, receive it, then we can start construction on the splash pad next year. So in the in-between time, we're gonna still continuing to be doing quite a bit of fundraising. Um, so what are the benefits of the splash pad? It's free outdoor water play for all ages and abilities in the summer months. It's an economic boost for Oregon businesses. We learned when we were working on trying to, um, develop the splash pad plan, is in finding out that people were going to other communities to fi- uh, to go to splash pads, that's what they do, they hop communities. So let's say we've got families that want to hop into Oregon, well, what do we have to offer? We have a lot to offer here. We have downtown Oregon, which has the Firefly, we have the Chocolate Caper, we have restaurants, we have hot dog places. We now have the Tavi and whatever place, the-
The Jack's.
Tavi and Jack's down the road. We will have Culver's soon. We have a lot to offer in this community. So if people come here to use the splash pad, they will also help us economically. The splash pad is, um, designed such that there's various age groups can use a particular area of the splash pad safely and with age-appropriate water play. So splash pads provide a rich sensory experience for developing children of all ages. Uh, playing with water is very important and fun for child sensory integration and development. Splash pads provide a great, great way to do this while engaging and encouraging children to explore, learn, and use their imagination in so many creative ways. We love to see kids using their imagination, improving their motor skills, understanding cause and effect, like what, the water bucket filling up, and then it gets so full that it spills over. Using math and science without even knowing that they're really using, um, their schoolwork. In addition, families, such as parents and grandparents, can really utilize the splash pad in the sense that grandparents, if they have their kids, their grandkids for the weekend, they could come downtown and they can go to the splash pad and feel safe and know that their kid, or their grandchild, is not gonna drown, and that they will be safe with other children, and they can watch them. Maybe they'll pick up a book from the mini library, the tiny library that we're gonna, um, have there, and they can relax and watch their loved ones in a safe, uh, fun environment. We also hope to have one adult evening per month, where adults can come to listen to music, meet their neighbors, have some appetizers, and actually enjoy playing with the splash pad. So what do we need next? We need you. We need the village board. And what do we need you for? The first thing is to support this project. I mean, I, we want you to actually support it and come out to the community and say, "We think this project is really good for Oregon, and we need support." So if you come out and verbally tell the community that you support it, we honestly believe that other people will also come in to, um, support the project, that we'll get other businesses on board to help with, um, the don- donations. The second thing is, is if the village could contribute any amount to this splash pad, it would really carry a lot of weight for other potential donors, because they know that now you have also invested in the splash pad. Even if it's a little bit, it's something to show the community that you really care. Um, one thing I wanted to point out about the splash pad that I was talking about with the solar panels is one, um, one donor that we just have recently gotten is Everlight. Will be providing solar panels, which will go on the top of the two shade structures. And those solar panels will be providing the energy to run the splash pad during the summer months. And when the splash pad is down, or during the winter months, that energy will go back to the Oregon School District to help the pool. So, Deb?
Well, my, I, she's pretty much said pretty much everything. Uh, my name's Deb Blossingham, sorry. This is a project, obviously, we've been working on for a very long time. Very long time, and we're not quitting. We're gonna keep trying, because we feel it's that important for this community, to have this for children. Um, I guess my question to you is, do you have questions? Do you have concern, what, what do you have from, for us to help you understand why we're doing this?
Anybody? Amanda?
Yeah, so, first off, I admire your perseverance. Uh, that's a long time to be fundraising, and I, I think it's a great project. I wonder, uh, for people watching the meeting at home, um, if you could remind people where they could go to donate to this project?
Yes, they can donate, um, online, they can go to the Oregon School District or the Oregon Pool, and the, and the Oregon Optimists. Um, anywhere, any one of those areas you can, uh, donate. The splash pad, um, uh, is kind of like a landing page, is on the Optimist, the Oregon Brooklyn Optimist page. So that's where you can don't online, uh, donate online if you'd like to do that. Or you can send in, uh, money to the Oregon School District in care of the splash pad.
Carleen?
So I have two granddaughters, and they love splash pads. And I would like for them to visit me more often. I personally think this is a great idea. And I am a fan of outdoor pools, so we have an indoor pool, an outdoor splash pad, I think would be a really great addition, and I agree with you completely. I think I, actually, Deb, I know your grandson, Finn, right?
Not grandson, probably son?
No, but I will talk about it later.
Yeah, Derek?
Um, so first off, fingers crossed that you get the grant money, I think that's fantastic that you, uh, applied for it. My question for you is, without that grant money, how much is that project short before it can actually break ground?
We've gotta at least get another three hundred thousand. At, at each time we bring up another budget, it gets more and more expensive, depending on the year. I mean, each year, they keep adding on another cost. So I, I'd say at least another three to four hundred thousand, to just at least put the base of it up. We may not be able to get all the amenities we want with that.
Thank you.
So for the rest of the board, one, I talked to Martin a little bit, uh, today about this. I mean, one of the things that we could look at, and Martin, correct me, is budgets coming up, a new budget for two thousand and twenty-three. It'll be here in a couple of months, we'll start working on it. So that could be something that we discuss for the budget. Martin?
Yeah, I know they, uh, you came in, was it August or September about last year? So we were kind of getting late into the budget cycle last year. But right now, we're just getting started with the capital plan. Um, and so I think if the board wanted to consider, uh, including some funds for the splash pad, this would be a good time to, to have that conversation. And we'll be talking, we'll be having several meetings, talking about priorities in June, July. So we can certainly put it in the hopper with everything else and see where it all shakes out.
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I was just, um, you mentioned, um, getting board members out there to spread the word. I'm open to that. You know, how, what, what do you think would be most effective, showing up at fundraising events? Or doing a proclamation or something? What, what were you asking of us?
I am asking for a proclamation of just that the board is in support of this project. I think the village, um, in the Oregon Brooklyn community in general, needs to know that, that you do back this project. It's gonna be in your backyard, it's gonna be used by the majority of your, uh, community members. It's gonna really benefit, um, those people who don't have, uh, or aren't economically strong. Uh, they might not be able to afford to go over to Stoughton, or to Madison, or use the pool, because the pool has user fees. Uh, so we need to think about those economically disadvantaged, uh, families too, that, um, yeah. I, I would like to see the, the board just come out and say you support it, one way or the other. I mean, whether it's financial or not, at least verbally say you're behind this.
Yeah, Mike, and then Jenna?
Yeah, can we, Martin, can we designate staff to put together a proclamation? And include in that proclamation, um, some sort of call for Oregon citizens to consider donating to this project?
Jenna?
I was just gonna say that I really like this project. I have, uh, young children myself, and, um, I really do wanna see it go forward and get, which is great for our community. And you're right, uh, parents are hopping, or grownups are hopping around with their kids all over Dane County to experience something new, um, and entertain their kids, who definitely is that as an attraction to get people here.
Yeah, Derek?
I'm totally in support of the proclamation idea. In my mind, it rings somewhat hollow if we don't actually look into putting it into the budget though, at least some sort of funding for it. So I think we need to, if we're going to create a proclamation, at least see what it looks like to have some village dollars put that way.
Okay, yeah, Phil?
Uh, I may have missed it, but in the, but what's the budget at this time for this project, the total?
Eight hundred thousand dollars is what we're estimating.
Thank you.
And by the way, I did forget too, Lycon is donating all the concrete. Paint and Dolan is do- donating all the underlay. I mean, we've got quite a bit of in-kind donations from the Oregon area. And we could use more of those too. Like excavating. That's what I'm saying that out loud. In front of a microphone.
Anybody else? Alright, well, thank you for coming, we'll, uh-
Thank you.
We'll see what we can do.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we're on to five A, which is proclamation, uh, from the village, recognizing May second through eighth as Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week. There was a certificate in our packet, which my-
Oh, week?
My computer has died, but, um, mine, mine died.
They only get a day.
So, so normally we would read it, but, um, Candy doesn't, we don't need to read it, but we can say nice things about her, or not-
And the staff.
And the staff too, yeah.
The clerk's department staff is amazing.
We, yeah, we certainly appreciate everything that, that the staff does for us. Yeah, yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, having worked many elections and getting to know the staff over many years, um, they're incredible. I mean, really, we're very, very lucky to have the municipal, municipal clerk staff that we have. So, well deserved.
Yeah, yeah, Jenna?
I was just gonna echo that, uh, Candy spent at least thirty minutes helping a lot of us with our electronics just before this meeting. And it was very much appreciated.
Yeah, alright, yeah, Derek?
And just to kind of piggyback on what Jenna was saying, Candy, whenever I need to sign something after hours, or need something after hours in general, I typically find her upstairs, working away at like six-thirty, seven o'clock at night. So your, your efforts are appreciated.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, alright, let's go to five, uh, five B, which is upcoming, uh, meetings and events. Uh, was in our packet, read it, put in your calendars. We can go to six, report of village officers. Six A was, uh, Martin's Village Administrator's Report. If anybody's got any questions for him, I'm sure he can answer them. Otherwise, we can go to six B, Village Department Head Staff or Consultant Comments. Yeah, Chief, you're up first.
Just briefly, so this last Saturday, we had, uh, our April Drug Takeback Day, where we taken all miscellaneous medication, medications and syringes. Uh, we partner with Oregon Cares to do that event. Uh, so that happened Saturday, ten A M. to two P M. Uh, if, if you stopped down, you would have seen on the left, people could drop off their medications. But then Oregon Cares, Cares had a booth set up that, um, had a lot of containers. You can lock up medications in, and then just brochures, information out there. Uh, it was, uh, very successful. And I guess before I get into the numbers, I just wanna thank the chamber for, uh, allowing us to put the signage up for the event. And I think that always helps, uh, as people come in and out of town to see that. Uh, just to give you a, an idea of what we collected Saturday, um, just in one day, four hours, we collected two hundred and seventy-four pounds of miscellaneous medications and thirty-six point six, uh, pounds of syringes. So quite successful. Uh, that was Detective Sergeant Jansen and Detective Gowan, who, who were the O P D employees that collected them. And then, uh, to look back at the last time we did it, just to compare, uh, we were about fifty pounds more this time than last time for collecting the meds. Uh, in October of two thousand and twenty-one, we did two hundred and twenty point four pounds. So, uh, we just keep taking the stuff in, which is really great to get out of, out of our community, out of our households, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chief. Who else? Rachel, you, I think you have something.
Yeah, I just wanna remind people to come out to the Brat Bash on Friday, eleven to one. Drive through the senior center, fill your car up with brats or dogs. Bad dog in particular is not available. Adopt some dogs. And, um, if you have any sway at all with Mother Nature, make sure that we get a decent day out of it, okay?
Yeah.
Please, come on out, we'll be glad to see you. We've got a lot of volunteers lined up from, um, the community and from several businesses in town, so we appreciate their help.
Alright, anybody? Candy's got something.
I would just like to, um, say happy one-year anniversary to Martin. It's tomorrow, Candy's been here a year, so I think he deserves that.
I did just move to the village over the weekend too.
He moved in on Friday.
Does it seem longer?
It does seem like he's been here-
Yeah.
For a while.
It's different every day.
Alright, we can go to six C, Village Board Comments. I know Carleen has got something. You want, this is where you want to-
Yes.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to let folks know that the first, uh, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Meeting will be this Thursday evening at six-thirty in the Fireside Room at People's United Methodist Church. It will be pretty informal, because, uh, we'll be getting to know one another, and I suspect the first few meetings will be that way until we have some shared understandings and are ready to move forward. So, uh, just so you know that, and thanks to those folks who are, uh, have agreed to be part of the committee.
Alright, yeah, Derek?
Uh, just a quick question, question for Carleen. Is that gonna be the normal meeting time, is the first Thursday of the month for that committee? Or having, we have a Friday?
I don't know that yet. Thursday evening was the time that would work for six of the seven people, and the seventh person had, was amenable to that, even though it's her busiest day of the week. So, um, we'll find out.
Alright, anybody else on the board? Mike?
Yeah, um, I, I can't begin to tell you how, how shocked I was on, on Thursday. I started receiving phone calls from people about a letter to the editor that was attacking my character and the character of my wife in the Oregon Observer. I can't tell you about the anger, fury and dismay when I actually sat down to read the letter. "Derek, you accuse me, my wife, and unnamed members of the village board of unethical behavior in the Oregon Observer. If you had problems with my behavior, I don't understand why you couldn't have walked across the street to talk to me. I live two hundred feet from you. I've never been anything but civil to you. Accusing a trustee of being unethical is a serious charge. Unethical behavior by public officials carries legal consequences. Unethical behavior is spelled out in the law. Am I using my office for financial gain for me or my family? No. Have I exposed myself to illegal influence by offer or receipt of a thing of value? No. Am I taking action to affect my private financial interests? No. Am I using my office for private benefit? No. Quite the opposite, if Oregon decides to greenlight the Sculpture Garden, my wife will be spending countless unpaid hours bringing it to fruition. If there's no private benefit to the Sculpture Garden in my household, there's only gonna be a private cost. My wife, Ray Vogler, has been an advocate and spokesperson for the Oregon Sculpture Garden. The supporters of the Sculpture Garden believe it will put Oregon on the map. They believe making Oregon a travel destination is a good way to invest in Oregon. It will help to grow the businesses we have, instead of trying to entice businesses to come here by giving them TIF money. It will make Oregon a more attractive place to live, and will help make Oregon the vibrant community that we all want it to be. A variety of artists, gardeners and businesses have put in a ton of effort and countless hours to make the vision of the Sculpture Garden a reality. You may not agree with the Sculpture Garden vision for two forty-nine North Main Street, but its supporters do not deserve to be attacked and shamed for wanting to make Oregon a better place. It's one thing to disagree with an idea, and an entirely different thing to attack and defame the character of those people putting forth that idea. Ray approached me last fall and stated that she wanted to see a park established at two forty-nine North Main Street if the library was moved. I frankly told her I didn't see any way that would happen. We sat down four or five days later, and she laid out her plan for a Sculpture Garden. It was something that I had never considered before. Ray talked about the power that art has to unite people and cross-cultural barriers. She talked about saving the two-hundred-and-fifty-year-old oak trees and creating a pollinate- She talked about saving the two-hundred-and-fifty-year-old oak trees and creating a pollinator gardens. She talked about how a Sculpture Garden can make Oregon a regional destination, that it would be good for our businesses and for our community. She reminded me of a weekend getaway that we had in Eau Claire, and how we'd both been taken by all of the sculptures that Eau Claire has in its downtown. That day, she won me over to the possibilities of a Sculpture Garden. However, I still didn't think that we should use the entire property for a park. I thought the portion of the lot fronting Main Street should be developed into row homes. My view is similar to what village staff is planning for the property, except I would have preserved more green space. You recall, Randy,
Mm-hmm.
That I and you had a discussion about this very thing at the Kickback Cafe a couple months ago, two months back. My views changed further when the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden started talking with the governments in Eau Claire, Red Wing and Stevens Point. Those governments reported that the sculptures helped revitalize their downtowns, that the sculptures were their number-one tourist straw, that their businesses were donating money for sculptures because the sculptures were improving their bottom line. They stated that people were moving into the community specifically because of their commitment to the arts. The feedback and the data these cities provided changed my view once again. I began to see the Sculpture Garden as a tremendous opportunity to support our businesses and to attract people to visit and live in Oregon. I came to believe that for the Sculpture Garden to be successful, it needs to have a presence on Main Street. That and my concerns about the financial implications of building in a TID district have led me to my current view that the entire lot at 249 North Main Street should be dedicated to the Sculpture Garden. The possible beneficial impacts are too great for Oregon to pass up, neither, and it's a no-loss situation. In the event the Sculpture Garden doesn't bring the benefits of promises, a future village board could always reconsider developing the property. Neither Ray's actions or my actions are remotely unethical. We are both trying to make Oregon a better place to live. But we were not the only ones harmed by the accusations in Derek's letter to the editor. The letter paints our village government as being corrupt. It sabotages the organizing efforts to establish the Oregon Sculpture Garden. There are many people that would have put work into the Friends, that have put work into the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden. There are many individuals, organizations and businesses that have endorsed. Derek, your letter throws suspicion on them all and devalues their hard work and efforts. The village board just established a diversity, equity and inclusion committee. If this effort is to be successful, one of our chief goals has to be to establish a public discourse that will make people feel safe expressing their desires and ideas without being attacked. Without establishing that safe space, we will never bridge the cultural, racial and political divisions in our community. Attacks like this undercut that effort. They make people not want to volunteer, not want to be in the public spotlight, not want to share their ideas and experiences for fear of being ridiculed and attacked. I unfortunately feel, Derek, that there is a pattern of these personal attacks occurring when you disagree with people. I've given a lot of thought to what I wanted to say tonight. Frankly, in my hurt and anger, my first draft of what I would say tonight had a far different tone. It would have inflamed our discourse instead of making it more civil. You could almost call it my Will Smith speech. I've decided instead to take a different approach, one that might make our future discussions more civil and welcoming. I want restorative justice. I am unwilling to suffer the consequences of Derek's attack on me or my wife's reputation. I would like you, Derek, to publish a retraction and an apology in the Oregon Observer. I would like you to apologize to myself, to Ray Vogler, to the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden, and to its supporters that you maligned. I think that would be an appropriate outcome. I'd also like to place on the agenda for the next village board meeting, an item. In the event that Derek can't find it in himself to retract his accusations and sincerely apologize, I'd like the board to pass a resolution that restores the reputation of myself, Ray Vogler, and the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden. I'd like the resolution to state that I, Ray Vogler, and the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden have done nothing, have not done anything wrong, and that we did not deserve to be attacked in the fashion we were. I'd like the resolution to state that the Oregon Sculpture Garden is one of several credible options for 249 North Main Street, and that the residents should not be attacked for supporting it. I'd like the resolution to take a stand for civil discourse and to apologize for the damage caused to supporters of the Sculpture Park by one of the village's representatives. And I'd like that resolution to be published as a letter to the editor in the Oregon Observer. If that resolution must come as a result of a formal hearing on ethics charges, then I demand that hearing. I want my reputation, my wife's reputation, and the reputation of the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden cleared of Derek's baseless accusations. Martin, Candy, I'll be sending the statement to you. I want it included in the packet for the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Derek, I assume you want to say something?
That's a, that's a pretty safe assumption there, Randy.
Okay.
So, my letter to the editor has not yet accused anyone of anything unethical. It merely brings forth my concerns about the optics of it, and bringing a light onto the connections behind this. I, you can wait for your letter, my letter to the editor for a retraction, if you'd like, but it will not be forthcoming, I'll tell you that right now. I, quite frankly, I didn't have a whole speech prepared for this, but the bulk of your speech with the problem with my letter, letter to the editor, has turned into exactly part of what I was afraid of, is we're already starting a debate on this project, proposed project, before we've even had a listening session on it. There seems to be one option for it currently, and, you know, we sat through a lot of other listening sessions for other things throughout the last, course of the last year, and, you know, we gotta take that public input before we just say, no, this is what I'm doing. As far as ethical behavior of the board, like I say, we haven't done anything yet, but I do have my concerns, and I'm entitled to my concerns. And yes, I can walk two hundred feet across the street to talk to you about it. However, being in the position that we're in, and I said it directly in my letter, integrity and transparency in local government. People in the village deserve to know that, yes, there is a relationship to you. I know that there is a relationship between you and Ray, but that's because, like you say, I live two hundred feet down the road from you. There's a lot of people in the village that I have no idea, and since I've, since my letter has been published, I've gotten quite a bit of feedback from people who have supported that had no idea. I've also gotten feedback from, from people who have supported and now have decided not to, based on some of the conversations that they've had regarding the Sculpture Park and the marketing tactics that are being used to, in their words, convolute between the Sculpture Park and Randy's public art grant. So, there's a few problems I see with this, and like I say, I'm not accusing anyone of doing anything unethical yet. But Martin was kind enough to email a process to me today. I mean, we can see where this goes.
All right, so, one thing, we're not gonna go back and forth. This is not gonna be it.
I just wanna comment one clarification.
Carleen is first, hold on. She had her hand up.
So I have a big concern about the way this is all playing out. I feel like this, if there were concerns, this venue is the one where it should have been brought to the fore. The newspaper, I do not feel is an appropriate place for these things to take place. We did have a motion and a plan, do have, a plan for public hearings, at which time these kinds of concerns should have and could have been brought up. So, I, I am feeling a lot of frustration that there are a lot of assumptions being made already, and there has not been a public, a public meeting to gather input. So, this is, has the potential to, to really cause great harm to our ability to work together as a board, and I feel it was not appropriately handled. And Martin did send to me as well the process, if there are concerns by which those should be taken care of. The newspaper is not the way.
All right, so Mike, one quick.
Yeah, I just wanna, just wanna read the, just a little piece out of, out of the letter to the editor, in case you haven't seen it, because we just heard Eric, Derek say he wasn't attacking me, or anyone connected to this. Quote, "I have significant concerns regarding the ethics of those proposing a Sculpture Park." And further down, "In the case of a vote, multiple board members should consider abstaining, given their ties to trustee Wunsch and Ms. Vogler." This is not blame-free here. I mean, he's pointing a finger directly at me, and I object strongly.
Okay, you both have had your comments. Let's, let's leave it at that.
Can I just say one thing to Carleen real quick?
Okay, real quick, and then we're, then we're moving on.
I appreciate your correspondence over the weekend in regard to this matter. Very civil, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on a, a different topic, or, okay. All right, let's go to seven, Communication Miscellaneous Business. Seven A is approval of vouchers in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. If we can get a motion in a second, we'll get it on the table, and we'll see if there's any questions.
So make the motion.
All right, Derek, I'm looking for a second. Amanda, okay. Anybody questions for staff on the vouchers? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, item thirteen, seven sixty-six, sewer sanitary TV, is that one of those robots that trundle through the pipes?
I can take that one. That is paying a company to come in and use one of those robots. So we did not purchase a robot, but we had somebody come in and TV a whole bunch of the sanitary sewer along Janesville Street in anticipation of the water main replacement and road reconstruction later on.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? You have anything? All right, Candy, you wanna do a voice vote on this one, please?
Sure. Jacobson?
Yes.
Fashion?
Yes.
Wunsch?
Yes.
Bevo?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Glush?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, seven B, Oregon Public Library Board Meeting Minutes, was in our packet, informational only for us. Jennifer, I don't know, do you need, you don't need, we don't need to see?
Just for your information.
You bet. Okay, thank you. Seven C is Village President nominations to the ad hoc Public Transportation Committee. All right, Amanda, finally, gets, gets what she's wanted. Amanda Peterson will be the village board rep. Cynthia DiCamilli, Brian Veet, Ray Vogler, Marilyn McDoll, McDoll, sorry, and Carol Cushing will be part of the committee. So we need a, a motion to confirm the appointments. Carleen, and then, oh.
Oh, what am I doing?
All right, Amanda, yeah, yeah. All right, so we got a motion in the second. Any other discussion? Do you wanna say anything, Amanda? It's been long coming.
It has been. I'm really excited to get going on it, you know, and, and I will say one of the first things that the committee's probably gonna look at is surveying the community and understanding how people would like to use public transportation, so that the options we choose from are appropriate for the community. So, citizens, watch out for some, some polling coming.
Okay, all right, so we got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, there you go, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right, seven D is ordinance number twenty-two oh eight, an ordinance providing for lead and galvanized water service line replacement in the village of Oregon. Staff recommendation, we need to suspend the rules and waiver the first and second readings, and then we'll take the, the ordinance by itself. So if we can get a, a motion to suspend the rules, all right, Phil and Jenna?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we can take, I don't think, Lauren, do we need, you wanna say, this is, this is the big grant that we got, right, Lauren? You wanna say something?
Yeah, this is in support of that grant. This is essentially giving us, I would say, the stick to the carrot and the stick approach that we're taking to replacing all of our private lead service laterals this year. So, we have this grant, as Randy mentioned, that will allow us to replace all of the lead and galvanized service laterals that we find in the community, but in the event that somebody is quite attached to their service lateral, I'm not sure why that would be, but maybe they are, or they don't want us to come on their property and take it out, this ordinance is essentially firmed-up language that tells them we have the right to come on your property to ascertain whether or not you have a lead or a galvanized service lateral, and in the event that we find one, whether it's with this project or in the future, because we missed one, for instance, we have the right to order that it be replaced. This year, people can get it done for free, but in the future, that might not be true. So this essentially just gives us that authority.
Okay, yeah, Amanda.
Just a question, is it, is it likely that you'll get to all of the ones that we know about within a year?
Yes, yes. We, this will, we've actually found far fewer, I would say, than we expected to up till this point. We had budgeted for about a hundred and eighty-five when we applied for the grant. We've found just over sixty at this point, so these will all be wrapped into our 2022 planned project, and I don't think there will be any problems getting through that list this year, no.
Okay, all right, so we need, we need a motion in the second to approve ordinance number twenty-two oh eight. Amanda and Jenna, okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay. We're on to seven E, authorizing the order of a 2024 International HV-607 chassis from Lakeside International in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-four dollars and twelve cents, and a plow, a dump body package from Burke Truck as equipment in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Motion is to approve?
Move to approve.
All right, Phil, Amanda second. Any discussion? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I'm very happy that we at least considered electronic vehicles for this, so, thank you.
Yeah, that's really to our street superintendent, Nick Hacks, credit. He and our mechanic went up to the Alliant Energy Center last week and viewed the expo up there, and came back with a lot of literature, as well as a lot of input from the representatives from the different companies there, and generally what they had to say was that this technology is coming, but as with, I would say, more consumer vehicles, you know, it's just a little bit behind that. So it took a while for that technology to develop, and now it's taking a little while for this big, heavy-duty equipment to get there as well. So within five to ten years, this is absolutely gonna be something that probably makes sense to consider, but right now, everyone kind of agrees that we're just on the cusp, and it's best to kind of wait at this point.
Thank you.
All right, so we got a motion in the second to get a new, new dump truck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay. All right, we'll go to F, which is Resolution Number twenty-two sixteen, authorizing, resolution for submission of an Orta Recreation Grant Application to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the Oak Street Tennis and Pickleball Court Reconstruction Project. Motion is to approve.
Make the motion to approve as presented.
Okay, Derek, and then I saw Mike's hand go up, too. So we should give kudos to Jeff. Jeff did this, this grant, it's in, I think it's similar to the folk, the one of the folk, the Splash Bad People, I think it's the same, so probably fall. I know the pickleball people, we got emails, they're disappointed. I know the pickleball people, we got emails, they're disappointed, but, you know, we just don't have the money to do it, and we're trying to do our best with this, so. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Seven G is proposal from Staley Plumbing and Heating Company to repair the wastewater treatment facility building 20, second-stage burner exhaust canopy for $900, and additional repairs as needed at a cost of $92 per hour, and material costs listed in the proposal. Lauren, do you want to say?
Yes, absolutely. So, this, I summarized a little bit in the memo, but this is a problem we've known was an issue since last year. When we first had Staley come out and take a look at it, they noticed that there were issues with both the first and the second-stage burner. They repaired the first-stage burner, because that one was legitimately an emergency. We have a lot of mechanics and piping in that preliminary treatment building, and that first-stage burner is our first line of defense against cold weather and pipes freezing and a lot of bad things happening. So, they went ahead and repaired that, but they found that the lead time for the second-stage burner parts was outrageous. It would have lasted through the winter season, and indeed it did, so we made the decision to revisit that in the spring, and they did just look at that and found that the parts are now much more available. I think they said a lead time of about two weeks. So, they proposed a stepwise approach to these repairs. They know that there is one major issue that has to be replaced, and that's in that $900, but what they're proposing is, instead of throwing essentially all of the different issues that could be happening into the initial quote, they've gone ahead and said, let's repair this first thing that we know is a problem, and then let's do this iteratively. Go in, see if this component is an issue, if this component is an issue, so that we are not paying for a whole bunch of components upfront that may not even be problematic. I did check with them, because so much of the supply chain right now on a lot of different things is quite wonky, as far as costs, and Staley's opinion is that these components are very reasonably priced at this point. So, this is not something that we're paying a premium right now to repair. This is something that's very in line with what they've seen in years past. So, we figured that this was an appropriate way to probably get this done most cost-efficiently and time-efficiently.
Okay. All right, so I'm looking for a motion in a second. Karleen is up, and Jenna, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, moving along, we're on H. Proposal from Natural Solutions to provide install 2.5 inches of wood chips to village playground areas in the amount of $16,295.
Move to approve.
All right, Phil? Amanda? Any discussion on this? Good to keep the kids safe on these. Yeah, Amanda?
Just a quick question, how did you arrive at 2.5 inches versus 2 inches or 3 inches? Just curious.
That's an excellent question. I will have to get back to you on that one. This one started with Jeff, not me, so.
Okay, I'm good with it. I just was curious what, how we determined.
All right. Probably industry standards, who knows?
Sure.
Yeah, right? All right, so we got a motion in a second to approve. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Aye is proposal from Staley Plumbing and Heating again for labor and materials for plumbing repairs at J.C. Park and Kaiser Fireman's Park Public Restroom in the amount of $4,883. Staff recommendation is to approve. Lauren, is that, that's just standard repairs, I'm guessing. That's what Jeff would say.
Yes, this, sorry.
I saw some things were leaking, and...
Yes, I was looking at wood chips. I apologize.
That's okay.
So, but this one is, in fact, me. So, when we were opening up the park bathrooms, the staff and public works noticed that several parts of different toilets at both Kaiser Park and J.C. Park were leaking. Kaiser Park toilets had more issues, just because they're much older than J.C. Park, but because we're opening up for the season and Summerfest is on the horizon, our staff recommended that we go ahead and speak to Staley about doing these repairs. We do have a plumber on staff, but they were above what we could reasonably ask him to do while still doing what we need him to do on a regular basis. So, we did bring Staley in. They said that, again, as with the, as with the components at the wastewater treatment plant, that everything that they were quoting is pretty reasonably priced, based on what it usually is. So, again, we're not paying a premium to fix small items. Yep, this is essentially just standard, the cost of doing business.
Okay. All right, so I'm looking for a motion in a second. Derek and Amanda, okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Can I just say the disclaimer, I'm not an expert when it comes to wood chips?
Yeah.
Just saying.
Okay. All right, we're on to J, which is amendment to the Oregon Area Senior Center policy regarding response and actions related to COVID-19 pandemic. Rachel?
We're trying to minimize what the policy looks like as we continue our pandemic path, and it becomes more of an endemic situation. We just want to simplify and make things a little clearer, go back to something closer to our normal. So, I think the policy that we attached shows what we're eliminating and what changes we're making.
Okay. All right, we get a motion in a second. Amanda and Karleen, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Well...
What? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, I think that Rachel has done a fabulous job of managing this, and that every time that I've been to the senior center, everybody seems to be in, you know, comfortable and in compliance, and it's very appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. We're on to K, which is agreement to participate in the Capitol Area Police Mutual Aid Response Program. Staff recommendation is to approve. Chief?
Yeah, so what I did was include with my memo, a copy of the actual agreement, but then also our policy on it, in case any of you wanted to know really all of the layers of this. But, you know, the best way I could describe it is just by giving you an example of when Catmar has been used, and it can be very successful. When Sun Prairie had their really large gas explosion, obviously, the response to that wasn't just hours, days, it was for a really long time, and you can't deplete so many law enforcement resources. So, what, and fire and EMS have their own versions of Catmar, but for us, this is what it is, and essentially, what the real change here is, is they just updated, because everybody's staffing and resources have changed, what they've done is updated the Catmar Police Incident Card. So, for example, and I hope it never happens, but something like Sun Prairie happens here in Oregon, they would get out this incident card, and they would say, okay, Oregon, what do you need? And if I say, you know what, I need level three, that is where the Dane County dispatcher's going to go, and they're going to start asking for, all right, Verona, how many can you send? Stoughton, how many can you send? And they start going down the list. Though, this isn't for that immediate emergency response, though. Obviously, mutual aid, your standard mutual aid is where you get all of that. So, like with the Sun Prairie incident, for the first day, everybody went. They had hundreds of resources. Same with the Middleton Paradigm shooting. But as time goes on, people get tired, and we're working into weeks, months, and this is where this comes in. This is not an emergency response. This is a, we need additional resources, let's start working through those. And the goal here with this program is to not overwhelm certain jurisdictions. You're picking from little ones as you go, and you get kind of farther out as you need to. So, I've seen it be very successful. We've done several tabletop exercises, and also just training exercises with the program. The reason that this is in front of you today is just essentially, the incident card has changed with the agencies that would be involved. You will notice that the staging areas have been redacted. The reason we did that is, we don't want the public to know where our staging areas are. That can be an area of vulnerability if we were to have something happen, so we, I mean, I don't think it's too hard to figure out where some of those would be. This is a little old Oregon, but we still don't want that public. So, I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, why don't we get a motion in a second, and we can have discussion? Yeah, Jenna? Jenna and Amanda? Okay, any other questions for Chief on this one? Okay, see none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. All right, we're on to L. 2022 Wisconsin One Million Trees Initiative, Community Tree Program Agreement with Alliance Energy and Trees Forever for Grant of $5,000 for tree planting. I like this one. Jeff and I wrote this one. Actually, we got the checker ready for $5,000. The one thing I do like about this one is, this part, this grant requires that the trees be in 10 to 20 gallon containers, which makes it really sort of easy for anybody who wants to plant a terrorist tree or plant, to plant. I don't know if anybody's ever, I've done a burlapped one. You need like five people to do a burlapped one. So, another reason I sort of like this, but this is a good thing with this one and the DNR one. Got to have more trees, right? Yeah.
This requires mapping, too, really, right? Doesn't it?
We had to sort of show them where. Yeah, so, I was talking to send Jeff an email. We'll get the tree application up on the website for people to start applying for those. Yeah. So, we'll put them in parks and boulevards. You know, we have this one, and we got the DNR one, too, so we should be able to do a fair amount of trees. Yeah.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm glad we could do it. I always have to ask, because I, did I do a motion? I can't remember. All right, we need a motion in a sec. Phil? And Karleen? Any other discussion? So, if you know people, it'll be up, they can apply, and I think we give up to $100 for, you can get two trees, up to $100 per tree. So, it's a good deal. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. M is granting exemption to chapter 9.82 of the Village Code for Unauthorized Persons in Park Areas after 10:00 PM and waiving permit fees related to the Oregon Area Chamber of Commerce related to the Oregon Summerfest Special Event. You may say, yeah, do you want to say something? All right, let's get a motion while they're coming up. All right, Phil and Amanda? Okay. Well, it depends what you say. We got a motion in a second, so you better choose your words very carefully now.
Very carefully. Well, I got the police department right here, so, we've already been working with them, so we have that already set up, and also, the fire department has been wonderful to work with. The thing that we're asking you to approve tonight is for us to stay open until 2:00 AM, which we don't plan on being there, but you never know. So, the band does go to 12:30, and we close it down, but we do have a free ride for people who have had a couple of extra drinks, and we want to make sure they get on there. Sometimes, we are longer, because it takes a taxi further to go places and to get them back, but we don't want to get in the vehicles ourselves and take people home. No, that's not our idea, but we do have Union Cab, who's going to do that for us. So, that's one of the things we want. What was the other thing that we wanted to talk about? The...
The fees.
The fees.
The fees, and we'd like you to please not charge us the fees, because this is a community event, and we've never been charged since I've been a chamber director, so. I know we got a new board, but there's a lot of things that are going to go on. I am probably not going to be there this year, because I have a wedding for my daughter, so I just, Ida Dumpick, she lives here in Oregon, and she's our president, so she is going to take the reins, because anyway, I'm going to retire anyway, so. I'm close to her, though, so I'll be a phone call away, so. But, yeah, I think it's, I think we're ready to go. Summerfest is bad. I know, I don't know if the police department, the fire department are ready for it, but we are. So, it should be a fun event.
All right, before we vote, anybody questions for, yeah, Amanda?
Oh, questions.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Yeah, anybody want, all right. So, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Judy, you're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll go to N, Agreement for Land Division Improvements for Bergamot Development Phase 5D with Bergamot Real Estate Holding Company LLC and Bergamot Golf Course LLC. Recommendation is to approve. Elise, these are just our standard developer agreements?
Yes.
Yeah. Mike, you want to make a motion?
I want to make a motion, and I want to make a comment.
All right, make a motion. All right, Mike's got a motion, and Karleen's got a second. Go ahead, Mike.
For, on page three, or page 183 of the packet, number nine, for street lamps, is there any problem with requiring energy-efficient street lamps, or is that just assumed?
Not sure if our code requires a certain, I think it's LED or not. I know they are required to meet our light ordinance to be downcast and for our dark sky initiative, but just from an energy-saving standpoint, I believe most of the new street lamps have been put in our LED in the neighborhoods. But, we're always looking at chapter 18, things to update, so I'll check on that language and see if that's something we can add in extra vision.
Okay, thank you much.
All right, anybody else? Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. We're on to eight, Report of Committees. Anybody, Mike, do you want to report a committee? You want to say anything?
We've had subcommittees meeting.
Next week, is it, Mike? What's the date?
The next, it's the second Thursday of every month. It's a sustainability committee. There have been meetings of, there's three subcommittees, so they've been meeting. So, it's moving ahead.
All right. And we heard from Karleen, and soon we'll hear from Amanda as they get started. Okay. We can go to nine, is unfinished business. We have none. Ten is new business. Items are for discussion, possible action. Ten A is review engineering plans and authorization to bid well number six, construction, phase one, well drilling and construction. Staff recommendation is motion to approve the plans and authorize bidding project as presented. Lauren, I suspect this is yours.
You suspect correctly.
Great.
This is, just as Randy described, this is the plan set for the drilling of well six, which is the new well that will be out in the Highlands of Netherwood. One thing to note about this is that this project, as I mentioned, is going to be phased, so this is just the drilling of the well, and the capping of the well, of course, and all the associated erosion control, but all the surface amenities, I suppose you could say, things like the building, the electrical, that sort of thing, that will come later, probably in 2023 or 2024, but we wanted to get this project going, and so we decided to do it in this fashion.
All right, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Just a quick question. This mentions a test pump. Is that a permanent thing, or do you just turn it on, make sure you can get water?
Correct. Yep, it's the latter. So, it's essentially, it's pretty standard practice when you do a well. So, we'll drill it, and then they do have, they do have to run this test pumping, as well as some sanitation, some sterilization in the well. So, this is all just kind of standard temporary equipment that will be put in, used as needed to test the well out, and then removed at the end of the project when the well is capped.
Okay.
All right. If we are good, we'll take a motion in a second to approve this.
I have one more question.
All right, yeah, Karleen.
So, when do you foresee the whole project being done and the well being used?
That, as I said, that would, of course, happen after the building is in place. That would probably be either next year or in 2024. One reason that we've held off so far is that the idea is to make the building itself match into the neighborhood, so it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb, and so we've elected to kind of slow down on that part, to let the neighborhood get more developed and see more of what we're working with in that neighborhood. So, if things move quickly, then we could see it probably next year, but we do want to make sure we're not rushing ahead, just in the interest of going. We've got enough capacity in our wells right now to last us a couple of years, until we We've got enough capacity in our wells right now to last us a couple of years until we get this online.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we ready to vote? All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Do we?
Do we? All right, we do now. Amanda and Mike, okay, we got any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Getting close to my bedtime. All right, ten B. Review tax increment financing policy incorporating affordable housing and sustainability objectives.
Sure, yeah, I can talk a little bit about this. Uh, so the, oh, was it the April eighteenth meeting when Adam Coyle came to talk about eighty-eighty North Main Street? We had a brief discussion about reviewing the TIF policy in relation to, um, maybe adding more language or encouraging, uh, more environmental sustainability or affordable housing into the TIF policy to better encourage that when, when applicants are putting forth their requests. And so, the policy is in your packet. And if there's any language or any questions or anything that you want staff to address, we can certainly do that.
Okay, yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I noticed there's some language in here for affordable, affordable housing. I would like you to consider adding language that says, uh, perhaps between, uh, items G and H on page one of the policy. Whether the proposed tax increment district or project incorporates environmental sustainability features, including but not limited to solar arrays, geothermal systems and EV chargers.
Yeah, Elise.
So, I actually spoke with, um, Village Attorney Matt Dregney about this last week before I realized Martin was going to put this into the packet. Cause I don't like to talk to Martin unless I have to, but. I didn't realize we were going to have this on quite so soon. So, Matt and I talked at length about, um, both affordable housing and sustainability, what some other communities, especially that he's worked with, um, and his colleagues have worked with at the firm. Language that's worked well with, um, TIF policies. And so, he, his recommendation is that we kind of break it down into some different chunks and look at some different approaches that other communities have done. And, um, you know, maybe it's broken out into kind of affordable housing and sustainability over to, um, board meetings, but just a little bit of an education piece is bring forward what's worked well in some other communities and just have some discussion and then, um, we can kind of come back.
Some lang, subjective language from other places.
Yeah, but I, I think the thought was that we would kind of do a little bit of a mini workshop at a, a board meeting when we have some time and bring some suggestions forward and look at some examples and then, um, we can come back to what we like and incorporate that into our own TIF policy.
Okay. Cause, cause Elise, one of the things that I, I'm struggling with, I don't know if anybody, is like, what, what does it take to, to do affordable housing? It seems like it's really complicated, but I, I don't know, I need to be educated on this. I know not everybody can do it and there's certain...
Yeah, he sent me one example from Shorewood Hills, which is one of the communities that he represents. They did do a project that I think is, um, maybe sixty units of housing and two of those were restricted to be affordable. Um, what I've learned about building and administering affordable housing is that really to kind of make, you know, um, an effort that's really going to make a difference, you're really doing kind of a whole building that's affordable housing and it can be a range of affordability. So, for example, Lake Stones project is a fifty to seventy percent area median income. If the North Point Development Project in Oregon Parks moves forward, that's a thirty to eighty percent area median income. And there's sort of, um, certain units are restricted to certain income levels. But the way that WIDA and property management is set up, there's a lot of income verification that has to, um, happen, a lot of overhead staff cost to make sure that the people who are in those affordable units qualify for that, that those rates are updated every year. I think it's a lot more than at this point the village is able to administer. Um, so, that's something I think we should look at is if TIF is, um, a worthwhile option to, you know, that's worthwhile to have that within our policy or if we should just focus on attracting and supporting Lytech projects, low income housing tax credit projects in the village. I think that's really going to, um, help us meet our affordable housing goals more than chipping away, having a couple of units here and there because it is a lot of effort and a lot of cost to maintain, which is going to get added to the project cost, which in turn increases the TIF ask, which is less time that we have, um, having that tax increment come into the tax roll. So, it all is an option we can pursue, but I think it's, there's a lot that we all need to do to learn a little bit more about what's the most effective way to go about that.
All right. Anybody?
I like that, I, I like the idea of having a, set aside time and, and look at like, uh, suggestions from board members and staff. I wasn't aware, I think, Elise, something that you said that under some scenario, the village potentially would be, staff would be in charge of making sure that certain units were being...
So, when we, um, so the Lake Stone Project on Jamesville Street, for example, Prairie Brook, it's a, they receive low income housing tax credits through WIDA. And WIDA takes care of all of the income verification, basically making sure that those units stay affordable thirty years. And so, that's not on us to administer. If we had, for example, the Adam Coyle apartment project on, up by the cemetery, if we would have said, Adam, you need to make two of those units affordable. We, that's not a WIDA project and so WIDA wouldn't be doing that for us. So, we would have to probably require him to work with a property management company that can do that work. And again, it's something that can be done, but that would just be additional cost on him. Um, and then we would have to make sure that that's getting printed in every year and, um, and kind of rely on some of those consultants and a lot of follow-up work.
I think just something like that, uh, you know, drives home the point that, that we, you know, we need to have a specific, not specific necessarily meaning, you know. And I think Matt really had some good ideas from when I saw him speak.
Yeah, I mean, I think these are good things for us. I, I don't know everything, I, I don't, but I want to learn more about this, yeah. I think it's a good idea. Yeah, Jenna?
I was just going to kind of piggyback on what Elise was saying. I think it depends on the type of affordable housing. So, if you're, uh, so I think Elise was talking about if the village is mandating it being affordable and then we would be required to make sure that that is enforced. But, if you have a developer who's working with, um, tax subsidized, whether it's WIDA or, or any of the other ways they can, can do that, then they would go through those agencies, so we would not be involved in it. But I think to, from my, um, perspective, because we did a lot of research about this when we had the, um, Housing Affordable, the Affordable Housing Coalition, was that by the time it gets to TIF ask, if it's not already an affordable housing project, it's too late in the project to start that. So, pretty much by the time some, a developer comes to staff saying that they would like to propose this idea and start working through that process, it has to be decided at that point or it, um, you're delaying it by a couple of years.
That's good to know, thank you.
Yeah, good. All right, so Martin and Elise, you kind of...
Yeah, and I think, you know, this kind of gets back to the crux of the discussion that we had when we first started talking about the TIF policy, which is, do you want it to be specific or do you want it to be kind of broad based? We ended up going broad based because we didn't want to create almost essentially a filtering system where we create all this criteria and then projects start coming in and staff starts looking at it and really, well, you don't meet that and you guys never hear about it potentially. Whereas you may have actually liked the project just because, even though it didn't meet your specific criteria.
Right.
And so, that's kind of where we ended up with the policy that we ended up, which is, you know, we do have a set of, of goals and criteria, but they're more broad based. As, as Mike mentioned, you know, G, for example, is under, you know, section three is, you know, we'll consider, you know, a project will be considered, you know, more favorable if it increases the availability of affordable housing. But that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to discount a project if it doesn't have it. So, I mean, that gets back to, we can get specific and communities do get specific, but you also might be creating a system where some projects may not get you and some people may not even apply because they see the criteria and just say, I, I don't meet that, so I'm not even going to try. So, it's just, it's, it's a matter of preference.
Okay. All right. So, we'll have more discussion?
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, cause I, I would hate to, for us to, because a product didn't have affordable, I like it. I like affordable housing, but we just discounted because it doesn't have it. We got to have some kind of leeway, yeah. So, I think we can get there. Yeah, Derek?
I would almost venture to say that the Adam Coyle project that he just presented was a per, prime example of that there, it may not be affordable housing, but it's a lot more affordable than what other housing is. It may not have as many sustainable elements as we want in it, but it does have some. So, I think that's one, a, a prime example of why to maybe leave this intentionally vague.
Okay, yeah.
I have to agree, I, um, um, I do still think it's worthwhile to, for particular board members might have particular things that they've mentioned that they want to address. But I'm very wary of, of creating policy where we're labeled based upon our policies and, and, and developers don't even show up, they don't.
Yeah, we don't need that.
So, we need to be, I think, that's a very good point, I think something that is very important to me that we'll...
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, just quickly, I, I mean, I'd like to see us, um, change the process a little more so that board members get an earlier look at projects so that we can voice those concerns as early as possible when the developer brings them. And that would help solve some of this because we could have those conversations and incorporate them early.
Okay. All right, Martin, Elise, your direction, you have it.
So, I know Mike had a suggestion for some language. And I do, I agree with Amanda on your comment and process because when I was looking through that, there is some kind of confusion to me even at the beginning of how that gets lined up. And I think we can do a better job of articulating that. But I think to, to, to Elise's point and to, to Matt's point, um, maybe it would be helpful to just to have Matt come and share some examples of that.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I'll just pull my suggestion for now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we'll start there.
Okay, all right, sound good?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's go to, to ten C, uh, is review, propose framing, uh, planning framing work for future senior center building project and consider consulting with qualified owners representative. I don't know who, who's got this one?
Do you want to take it? I don't want to take anyone's thunder here.
Apparently I'm really good at stealing people's thunder, so. All right, so, um, just because we didn't feel like we had enough going on right now and, um, thought we'd throw another project in the mix, this could potentially be the biggest, um, project the village has ever undertaken, more than the library, more than, um, you know, J.C. Park, anything here. So, um, we know our senior center is reaching the end of its useful life. We do know that, um, when our civic campus plan was done, there was a very cursory, quick look at some space needs, uh, planning, uh, for the future. And it was sort of just, oh, here's what you have and multiply times one point five based on, you know, we expect the village to grow at a certain rate. And not really done in a, a useful way to understand what the needs of the senior center truly are. And since that time, a lot of the uses and activities that the senior center undertakes have changed. So, um, we are, um, recommending getting started on kind of the planning step to understand what are our needs for the senior center and regardless of what form, any kind of redevelopment on the senior center site, which is, um, has always been kind of designated as a Brook Street site where we own property, where the library currently is, the senior center, the post office, um, there's also some adjacent right of way that could be used. And then, of course, the future of this building may or may not, um, come into play as some sort of, um, campus or some kind of, um, you know, updated downtown. This is our opportunity to really think about what those properties can be and how they can serve the community. So, um, we've spent the last several months, um, working, kind of spinning our wheels and thinking about where do we start? Um, and, um, Jeff Fine, uh, the owners rep for the library, actually reached out to us, which is some sort of pro bono thoughts. I'm sure he's, um, thinking about, uh, his next project too, but he just gave us some thoughts about, if I were in your shoes, this is sort of where I would start. And we had a really helpful conversation with him. So, I tried to kind of capture the steps of that in some sort of order, um, so we can get a sense of what needs to happen when. So, um, the first stages here are what we believe needs to happen first. Um, one would be that space needs analysis. So, we need to know what physical space the senior center needs to be successful now and in the future, deliberate services. This would be needed, um, to inform an eventual construction project, regardless of what form or scope a final project may take. So, there's been some talk in years past about, um, possibly doing a public-private partnership and having a private developer come on board, perhaps, um, that provides senior housing, senior affordable housing on the site. But there's a lot of ways that that could be set up, um, both from ownership wise as well as just physically on the site. And we don't know yet what would, what makes the most sense. But that's space needs analysis for the senior center regardless of how big their building is or what floor it's on or if it's its own building or, um, part of another. We're going to, we're going to need to know that regardless. As well as, um, property due diligence. So, there's been a lot of work that's already been done, um, to understand some of the soils and the water table issues on the current, um, library site and kind of the block as a whole. But a lot of that information needs to be updated and more needs to be understood about really what we're dealing with. So, if we are looking to do some project that might involve underground parking, for example, really understanding what would be involved to make that a possibility. So, a lot of that would, um, again, need to be understood regardless of what form the kind of construction project takes. So, even if we bring a private developer on, they'll want to know what they're dealing with. If it's a project that we undertake ourselves, we'll certainly want to know, um, you know, what we have our, on our hands. And then also community engagement. So, um, as I mentioned, there could be a lot of, um, there could be other adjacent uses, um, for the senior center. We've talked about, um, there's a need for active space for the senior center. That's really where they've seen a lot of growth in their active programming. There's always a request for more availability, availability for indoor walkings, like an indoor walking track. And there's been some discussion about, is that a type of facility that we'd like to make available to the whole community, um, beyond just the senior center hours, you know, nights and weekends? Is that something that the village would want to take on? What's the space, you know, need for that? Would it be used? So, understanding kind of all the project's potential strengths, weaknesses and opportunities, those should all be considered by the public and then, um, just getting that feedback and, and, um, especially working with our town partners who, who are served by the senior center, understanding what their needs are too and, um, how they'd like to be involved. There are sort of this whole set of unknown stages that may be needed, but we need to gather more information first. So, do we want to embark on a whole nother community rec center? Do we want to have an adjacent preschool as part of the senior center project? Do we want to have housing on the site and if so, how does that work? So, again, you can tell it's a very complex and technical project. This will, I've kind of been thinking this as downtown two point O. This is a huge swath of land, um, and, um, really our opportunity to help make downtown something that we, um, really see serving the community and to the next century. So, we want to make sure we do it right, because we really have one chance to do it right. So, uh, based on our recent experience with library project, um, we've seen the advantages of having owners rep on board, um, kind of maybe mid to late in the process. And I think there, we think there's a lot to be gained having that person kind of on board and on our side, caught up to speed early on. So, as we move through doing a space needs analysis and working with an architect who has experience in community facilities, they can help us write that contract. They can help us make sure we're asking the right questions and getting the right person on board. They can help us a lot of the engineering, um, that's involved with that due diligence for the site and making sure that, again, we're asking the right questions, that we have the right information. And then guiding us through community engagement and making sure that the questions that we're asking of the public are going to be useful too. So, uh, we are requesting from the village board to authorize us to develop an RFQ, a request for qualifications to seek a qualified owners rep for the project. And, uh, the, the pages that follow basically are the steps that I sort of outlined, but, um, the key points, again, the space needs, we know the location. Uh, we do have funding that has already been borrowed, uh, thirty thousand dollars to start the senior center planning process. So, that's where the funding initially for the owners rep and then likely for, we move forward with an architect to do the space needs planning. Uh, a lot of that initial work could be covered by that thirty thousand dollars. So, um, the first stage would be the RFQ process, which we think would kind of take us through the summer to get that person, uh, get that advertised and get that person on board. Space needs analysis, uh, would take us through fall and winter. And then, uh, then the property due diligence would be, um, getting us into next year. So, happy to take any questions. Rachel and Martin have worked a lot on this, um, with me as well. We've presented this to our municipal working group as well with our town partners and they're on board and we'll be updating them, I'm sure, as we, um, hopefully start to move forward with this process.
All right, questions? Yeah, Amanda and then Mike?
Yeah, this sounds great. Um, I just had a procedural question. Compared to the library where the funding works differently, you know, we had to have this whole kind of like MOU that we crafted and that took like nine months or whatever. Am I correct in assuming that we don't need this for the senior center because we directly oversee those funds?
Correct. The senior center is a, is a village function, yep.
Okay. I just would, I didn't know if there were any other funky things because of the funding, you know, coming from the county for services and things like that, if they had any say or there was some complications there. But if it's just us, that seems...
No, not, not, not initially, at least in the early stages. I mean, we have our town partners there. You know, it's, it's different than the fire district where we're jointly created a, an entity that we're all partners in. The senior center contract is a contract. The senior center contract is a contract. We own the senior center, we operate the senior center, they're contracting for our services. So we have a little bit, we're a little bit more on the driver's seat as far as that's concerned. But we did talk a lot about, you know, how are they going to be involved in this process? Because they're obviously stakeholders. And I think that's one of those unknown stages at this point is how and what form are they going to be involved? Certainly engagement-wise, we're going to want to get their feedback. But I think as Elise mentioned in the memo here, you know, there's certain things that we know we just, we need to do no matter what form this thing takes. We need to have the space needs, we need to do the community engagement, we need to do due diligence on a property. Once we get that stuff done, then we can kind of start to evaluate, okay, what are the towns' involvement in this all look like and that sort of thing? So, yeah, to answer your question.
Sure, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I just want a little clarification. So this looks good to me too. But the, the piece on space needs analysis and community engagement seem, I mean, you've got one coming after the other, but it seems like community engagement may impact your space needs analysis. How does that, how do you foresee that working?
Yeah, we, we talked about that a little bit too. So I think definitely, definitely the community engagement part is going to impact space needs analysis. I think in our discussion, there are some things that we know as far as the space needs analysis of things that we need that maybe the public just doesn't know or really care about as far as staff space and offices and things like that. So we're, for the space needs analysis, we need to get the box with the little boxes in them and how they orient to each other. And then once we have that, we can show the community that and say, hey, what do you think? Are we missing something? Does something need to be over here? Does something need to be over there? So we want to make sure that we have some information to give the public to at least look at and understand and then get their feedback and then refine that analysis.
So rather than kind of opening Pandora's box to the community to start and say, what would you like down, you know, on this block? And maybe a lot of those things aren't possible and there's a lot of uses that the senior center has that people aren't even aware of, like the foot care service that they provide to people. That's a space that needs, you know, a sink, get a room with a door and everything. And that's not something that we're going to ask people, you know, do you think we should have this or not? We know that we're going to have that regardless. But maybe there's a point where we decide, I think Rachel used the example of, okay, well, we, we believe we're going to kind of have another community-type space. Do we want that to be more of a, you know, fitness-type studio or more of a classroom space? Or also with some of those possible adjacent facilities, you know, community rec center or preschool or green space or something, how does the community see those fitting together with the senior center? Are they likely to use those other facilities? Especially because a lot of people don't see themselves as, you know, users of the senior center, even if we're all going to get there one day or you don't think you're a senior, but you really are. You know, thinking about what, how else might the community be involved in this project rather than just thinking immediately saying, this is a senior center project, this isn't relevant to me, I'm not going to show up to these meetings, I'm not going to answer this survey because I'm not a current user of the senior center and, you know, it's not relevant to me. So I think they definitely work hand in hand, but it may end up being too that the architects or whatever designer we use for the space needs analysis would help us with the community engagement too and doing kind of workshops or charrettes that actually start to build out what are these different spaces or showing examples of other communities' buildings and kind of getting people's thoughts on how they would use those spaces. And I think the big thing is just deciding what we want to have as village-owned and operated facilities and what are the things do we want to sort of leave to maybe a private developer to have? Or what things do we decide that really don't need to exist on the site? Because as we've learned, it's a finite say, we can't fit everything onto that one block and possibly this building footprint too. So having a realistic understanding of what's possible, I think, is where we need to start.
Okay, I mean, I think we've even talked about, Rachel, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, not even calling it a senior center anymore, rebranding of what this is going to be.
It's a community center.
Yeah.
And there's services that are, you know, directed to seniors and it's kind of, again, an opportunity to envision what are the services and spaces that our community is missing right now and how can this project, these sites, help meet some of those?
Okay, yeah, Karli?
I just want to say I've been on the council on aging since I got on the board and it was an incredible learning curve. And it was also on the library board. And so to see the things that we were, you know, that we didn't know and through no fault of anybody here, in the library board and the learning, the very quick learning about what we need to do and be proactive about in the senior center, I think is a testament to just how resilient we can be when it's like, oh, wow. If we had, if we had known these things and now being sure that going into the next project, we know them upfront. And so I commend both Rachel and Jennifer for having those conversations about the things you learn along the way and for Elise just really doing a lot of work on this. I was at the meeting where you presented this and it was like, wow.
It was nice, and Jeff Fine was super helpful with this. And I think these were all questions that were sort of spinning, but we use Martin's least favorite phrase, which is chicken and the egg. What comes first? Because there's so many different questions. It's like, well, what do we need to figure out first? We even started, I think, with drafting a, I guess we're drafting an ordinance for a, like a.
Steering committee type thing.
And they were like, well, maybe that's not even the right place to start because maybe it's not, again, just the senior center. Maybe it's this whole massive multifaceted project that we, you know, Rachel and her team only has kind of one part to play and we shouldn't, you know, rely on her to plan this whole project. But it's a lot of people involved and a lot of questions that need to be asked. But I think, you know, this is a, you know, there's not been a lot of investment in these type of services and that property is so, so much at the heart of the community. So again, doing it right and learning from recent memory and lessons. If we have an opportunity to start off on the right foot, why not take it?
All right, anybody else? Otherwise, they're looking for, we're looking for a motion to authorize staff to develop a request for proposal for owners representative services. All right, I'll take Phil and then I'm going to take Jenna. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Ten D, status update and provide twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three village board strategic plan for review. I think it was in our packet. Martin, do you want to?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit.
Yeah.
So we can talk as much or as little as you want tonight on this. And my, my thought process was getting the plan back in front of you, providing some information on where we're at with some of the objectives that we outlined. It's only been about eight or nine months since we actually approved the document. But I thought this was a really good time with the new board being seated to get this back in front of you and then maybe over the course of another couple of meetings, similar to how we did last year, we can refine the document a little bit and make sure that we're working on things that this board wants to work on.
Okay, yeah, Mike?
Yeah, we got a lot done, it seems.
Yeah, we have.
Curiously, I know you had discussions with the new board members. Are there other priorities that they have that aren't on this list?
I think so. I mean, I think some of the priorities, and certainly they can, you know, speak for themselves, but I think some of the things match very well. And I think there's also some different ideas too that we could incorporate into a revised plan.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, just thanks for being so organized and, you know, and looking at these again now, you know, almost a year later and going, oh, yeah, yeah, we did that. That's, we did this, good, good. I mean, it's nice to have the plan and be able to remember it and see it happening in real time. Like, that's, it's a nice layout that you have, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I know doing this for ten years, sometimes you feel like you haven't accomplished anything sometimes. But when you look back, sometimes you realize you have, so it's always a good time to do it.
Yep, anybody else? All right, so Martin will see this again.
Yeah, we'll put it on the next meeting and we can talk about adding some things in and go from there.
All right, let's go to ten E, which is future agenda items. Items give the board members opportunity to place items and new business on our future agenda for discussion. Anybody?
I was going to ask that we reduce Clerk's Week to five days. We have that discussion or not?
Sure can.
Before next year, we'll do that.
Yeah.
All right, let's go to eleven. A adjournment, Amanda and Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. I'm sorry, we're adjourned.